Order and um uh this is a retreat like no other after a year like no other. And I certainly, I think we are all, you know, starting this retreat with a sense of hope and optimism. Um but we certainly recognize that uh there is a veil of sadness. And um with respect to the events that happened that shook us all to the core. And really um make, you know, from my perspective, I think it makes me want to work harder to preserve our uh democracy and to have uh restore faith in in government. And work together for the common good. Um you know, it was heartbreaking to see what happened yesterday. And um at the end of the day, I think the at the end of the day, electoral college votes were certified. And I hope that um today we'll we'll see a little bit of um a difference in um what's happening across the country. We know it's not all going to be undone in um in an overnight um achievement. But I think um as we as we start our retreat today, I hope that we will be able to um accomplish the things that we are here for and that we will have a renewed effort in in what we do as local government officials and staff as we work hard for the city of Decatur. So I do wanna, I think the city manager would like to also make a few comments. And then we'll get started. So thanks, Kelly. Right, Andrea?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um when I was speaking with um with Coach Kelly yesterday, planning for their retreat, I think the last thing I had said was, no, no, I'm not gonna say anything. Let's just go ahead and and jump right in. However, after the events of yesterday and and late last night, um I did jot down a few things that I I felt um that I really wanted to wanted to share with the group before we get started today. You know, first of all, it's just a big thank you um to each of you for taking time out of your schedules. Your schedules are are very demanding. I don't wanna say busy. I'm trying not to use the word busy this year, but um we all have very demanding schedules. Um and this is just it um, you know, one of the few opportunities that we have each year to give our undivided attention um to planning thoughtfully and strategic strategically for our community and for our community's future. Um after um yesterday's events, I was reminded of just how fragile, and I believe that's the word Mayor had used in a in a interview um with um with um I think with Dan on Decatur. I was reminded of how fragile um our democracy is. And while we, um if you felt like me, we probably feel helpless um you know, watching those events um unfold um in DC. But it also reminded me of the um you know, the influence and the impact um that we all are able to have in the lives of people right here in Decatur. And I want people who are watching today, I want them to see uh that that democracy at work. Um see it at work today um and tomorrow uh during our retreat. And this is happening um among a group of people. We have, we come here with really diverse backgrounds, uh different experiences, different beliefs. Um but we're still a group of people that we respect each other. We're here to listen to each other. We have trust in each other. Uh we wanna, we wanna learn from each other. And um because we do, we have a shared vision for our community um for today and for the future generations. We have to remember, of course, we're we're still in a pandemic. Um real racial equity and inclusion is still, I believe, is still an aspiration. Uh we have community members that are struggling to afford to live here. And residents of all ages have high expectations of us um that Decatur will implement um effective environmental policy. And so these are awesome issues that I know that we wanna discuss today, these and a lot more. Um is a whole lot considering the limited time that we have together. Um and so I want to acknowledge that, the challenge that the virtual environment will bring. Um but I know we'll do our best. Um but again, it's it's also the the right way for us to gather um at this time. So uh with that, let's uh let's get get into the retreat.
Yay, thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Andrea. Um we are ready to kick off with a good retreat um in this first ever. Just a couple reminders um for those of you that might be listening in. Um the way that we will operate this retreat is we will talk amongst ourselves. The chat feature is not available um to the panelists. If there are burning questions that come up, you can include the question. It'll go to Meredith Work and she will make sure that it's communicated to the rest as needed. And then we'll provide responses um as time and opportunity presents. The other thing just to mention is this is not being recorded. And we wanted to do our best to create that retreat feel, which is a challenge to do virtually. Um and we think it's nice, as Andrea said, just to be able to simply focus um completely as we would in a retreat environment. So I just wanted you to know that as well. All right, I think that is about it. Where I'd like to go is I wanna take a moment to to um kick us off. And um you know how I usually do, in a somewhat fun way. I wanna take an opportunity um to kick us off with a fun welcoming exercise. So if you can see my screen there, here is my question for you all. What are your intentions for 2021? Okay, so instead of coming up with a long list of what you plan to do or resolution, here are a couple ways that you might wanna communicate back to us, what are your intentions? And if you haven't even thought about it yet, here's a great time to do so. You might communicate your intention in a mantra such as, don't ruin a good day today by thinking about a bad yesterday, let it go. Or as Andrea said, uh what did you say, Andrea? You said demands, not busy, right? An intention to look at things that way. You might wanna summarize your intention as a song. I did my way. Okay, I can't sing. Or maybe, maybe you just come up with three words, commit, succeed, grow, whatever it is for you. But take a moment and I'd love for everyone just to take maybe two minutes or so and come up with what is your intention? Take another minute or so. Okay. Are you ready? Good. Okay, so who will kick us off?
I'll start. So when you put that up there, I was like, panic, right? This is so hard for me. Um and then, you know, when I took a few quiet minutes, I I came up with um several things. And um the first, I I would be open, be honest and listen. And then um I guess the what the song title probably that um most reflects what uh my intention for this year, and I apologize for doing more than one, but is I get by with a little help from my friends.
Oh, that's a great one. Love it, love it. Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor, that was my senior quote in high school. In the yearbook.
Can't go wrong with the Beatles, right?
That's really good. Okay, who's next?
I'll go.
Yeah.
All right, so I sort of took the mayor's route as well. And you know, this year, I'm gonna let my actions do the majority of my talking. And for my song, it's an old classic from M C Hammer, Let's Get It Started.
All right.
Thanks for that earworm. Now I'll be singing that all morning, which is great.
Can you dance like that, Tony?
No.
Fantastic. Thank you, Tony. Yeah. Keep going.
I'm happy to jump in and uh this is not something I try and talk about late in a meeting. So I can do this in the morning with my second cup of coffee. Um I like mantras a lot and they come to me, I'll be honest, uh when I'm deep in an activity, particularly running. So when I race and your mind is like trying to clear everything out, mantras come to me and they're useful in that moment. But when I have more kind of reflective time like this, um something that's been helping me or helping me pull a thread that I wanna use personally and professionally is to think more philosophically, which is my more form of meditation or reflection personally. And I've been reading a book called Socrates, The Socrates Express. And it's a neat curation of different um philosophers and thinkers. But that's been giving me a little bit of peace and zen, which is what I wanna bring to uh our work and to our decision making and to our relationships. Uh because speaking of busy, I think we have a lot of demands on us, not to mention our own personal, you know, dealings with the public health crisis and trying to work. But um I'm really interested in the idea of using ethos logos pathos. That would be my mantra maybe. And there's a little bit to unpack with each, but they're called Aristotle's modes uh for persuasion. But I think if if I'm able to get a little bit of each when I'm making decisions, I'm gonna feel like I had a holistic um way of looking at something. And so just quickly, ethos is an appeal to ethics. Quickly way, so you can convince an audience with authority or credibility um of the persuader. And and we can do that as just simply by saying, now I'm an elected official and I'm I'm gonna, you know, you can trust me and that's how I wanna help make the decision. But pathos and appeal to emotion and a way of convincing an audience of an argument by creating an emotional response. And I would hope to use a lot of empathy and understanding of what residents and constituents and and my colleagues are are saying and feeling. And then logos is an appeal to logic and a way of persuading an audience with reason using facts and figures. And I know that data and business cases and studies and and the hard work that our staff does is is always what help us prepare. So long story short, uh ethos logos pack pathos. And I'm gonna continue to unpack those for myself, but so let's call that my mantra.
Lovely.
And thanks for hanging in there with me on that.
What I love is you can tell Kelly has thought about this, right? She didn't come up with that in the last two minutes. Thank you, though, for being very intentional and leading the way. I love that. Yeah. Who else?
Besides the Georgia me, right?
Ladies first, Lisa.
Ladies first. Okay, well, I only set one intention for this year. I I love intention setting and goal setting uh and do it really every day. But uh my intention for this year is to be gentler and kinder with my gentler and kinder with myself. I'm 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 my toughest critic, so I'm gonna give myself a break this year.
Good, good, good. Yeah.
Okay, um I normally am not one for New Year's resolutions. But it's interesting, Kelly brought this up, cuz I was up this morning and I was brushing my teeth and I was about to grab my phone and and try to do some other stuff. And I thought to myself that I spent too much of my time trying to do too many things at once. And so I had resolved actually that I was gonna do one thing at a time. And so that is my um I mentioned mantra, whatever, but do one thing at a time.
Yeah, that's great. Do one thing at a time. Yes.
So I've shut down my other two email accounts and I'm fully here.
Good, thank you.
I'm gonna shut the door so Gary didn't hear that, so. But that's a great, um I think it, we've all, we all find that when we do one thing at a time, we do that one thing much better instead of doing three things um not so well. Something is missing as we divert our attention, I think. So thank you for that, George.
Well, there's no such thing as multitasking. Our brain actually has to shift. So it's a misnomer. We think we're doing more than one thing at a time, we're not. And then it takes us much longer to shift back into what we thought we were doing to complete it. So yeah, it's a bouncy. Yeah. Staff, I'd love to hear from you, too. You're not off the hook here.
Thank you.
Get them, Kelly.
I know.
I had a a couple, I've got uh words and a mantra. So the immediately, the first words that came to mind were listen, learn and grow. Um and so just obviously, you know, listening through listening, um yeah, learn, learning through listening, but also just continuing to um, you know, to seek um, you know, seek new ideas, seek knowledge, continue, just to be that continuous lifelong learner um and to continue to grow, um you know, and just to, you know, to not be complacent, to not be stagnant. Um and and just um continuing to um to grow and to to grow as the organization needs me. Now, in terms of the, I came up with a mantra. And it's actually similar to a mantra that I have. And as Commissioner Walsh stated, uh mantras are very um popular with us runners. And um I actually go into a long run uh with the mantra, knowing that um at a certain mile, um it doesn't matter. Um you know, it's it's not, it's no longer physical. It becomes a, you know, a mental game. And I'm prepared, you know, with that that mantra to to see me through, to get me through to the end. Um and that is normally, uh recently, I've gone, I've I've drawn on, I'm tougher than this race. Um and I would translate that um for us to, you know, we are tougher than this challenge. And just to tell us that over and over, we are tougher than this challenge. Um and I think looking back on 2020, um you know, we have shown that that toughness. Um cuz I know, you know, there there were times where um, you know, yeah, I mean, I felt, you know, physically depleted, um but had to to draw on encouragement from other places um to to help, you know, get get over the hump and and get through the, some of the more particular tough times.
Isn't that inspiring? We are tougher than this challenge. Thank you.
I'll try, I'll try to uh express myself here. Um I think we've uh to build a little on what Andrea's said. I think we learned a lot about ourselves this year, uh both individually and as members of a team. Uh I really, I really think the uh value of teamwork uh, you know, was uh clearly uh uh shown this year. Um uh and I think it got got us through all the challenges that uh we have faced. Uh I um have uh, I'm extremely, for some reason, even with the tragedy yesterday, I'm extremely optimistic uh over the uh for the last month at least. And it just has grown really uh especially uh uh earlier this week. Lots, lots of uh of uh s uh uh reasons to be optimistic about the future. Um the uh and uh my my personal uh motto is sort of uh work hard, be nice. And uh that's what I try to do uh every day. And uh that's what I'm gonna continue to do uh as a member of this team.
Love it, Hugh. Work hard, be nice. I like that one, too. Yeah, yes.
So mine's a little bit different. Um my daughter gave me Disney Plus for Christmas cuz I've been wanting to watch um Hamilton. And so I was looking at some of these old movies. And when you said that, the movie that jumped out at me was Mary Poppins. And the reason is, I love that um, I love to laugh song. But then the song that really gets me is um Let's Go Fly a Kite. And I don't know if y'all have seen that movie or seen it in a long time. Um but you know, it's it's at the end of the movie and it it has hope with it. And it shows the importance of imagination and yet also being grounded cuz your feet are on the ground. And I think that's what we're doing at this retreat, where we're, we have our feet on the ground, but we're spending some time imagining what could be and then making it happen. And that's the way I wanna have this whole year is my intention.
Yeah, yeah. I can feel the emotion in there, Linda. Yeah.
Y'all know that about me. It's just the way it is.
We love that about you. Thank you. Yeah.
I can go next. Um I think 2020, I spent a lot of time reacting or, you know, like just trying to get things done and um trying to just keep on moving and getting things done. And I think um I'm hoping for 2021 that I can refocus, you know, start thinking about the bigger picture again and think about goals and really push towards being proactive. So I think refocus and proactive are my two things.
Refocus and proactive. Thank you, Theresa. Yeah. Angela, Meredith?
Sure, I can jump in. Um good morning, everyone. I think for me, um mine's gonna be a little bit more tangible. And it's it's something a little bit more old school and it's more snail mail. Um you know, I think we can all agree that this past year has been really difficult to connect. And it wasn't until the holidays that myself, my family started receiving a lot of those, um the the Christmas cards and the Christmas letters. And it was um really heartwarming to receive that kind of snail mail. And um I think I want to continue that throughout the year. And um I Hugh just mentioned, you know, work hard, be nice. Uh and I I like that because I think we need to thank each other. And sometimes getting that handwritten thank you note goes a long way. So I'm gonna um try to do that throughout the year uh for for employees here. And then, of course, notes to friends and family as well. So that's my intention.
It's a wonderful idea. I think we we could all um really steal that idea of yours is just to acknowledge people with a handwritten note. It does make a difference. It definitely does, even even with those that work with you and around you, just to let them know what you're appreciating about them.
Yeah.
Unless Mr. Downs wants to go, I will jump in. And I skipped ahead to June in my calendar that will be on my fridge. And I'm sorry, my, there may be a little bit of glare. It says choose bright. Because so easy, especially through 2020 and even now, with all the demands we have to grow dull and cranky. So be intentional about trying to find those bright moments and just doing it. And try, instead of going to the dark side, come to the bright side.
Good, Meredith. Thank you.
Never seen you be dull and cranky, Meredith.
Never seen her on the dark side, right?
I think she's, I think she's talking about me. Never. I need, I need the reminder, Meredith. Thank you.
Brian, you wanna close this out?
Yes, I want, yes. I don't think I have much choice in that. That's all helpful. Um you know, I had a couple of things written down. At the end, I decided to to say that I want to surround myself as much as possible with positive, smart, hardworking, innovative people, which obviously, uh I think you understand my inspiration for that.
Well, you're in the right company. Yeah, good. Well, thank you all. Thank you for for sharing your intentions. And even if you hadn't formulated them completely, now you have one um to guide you through. And notice that I didn't call it a resolution. I think resolutions do feel like they're more goal focused and it's easier to break them. But as we said, with an intention, you get to hold it in the back of your mind to revisit it to see how it's playing out every single day. It's not something you have to do. It's it's more of a way of showing up and being. Yeah, great. So I'm gonna continue to share my screen to show you um where we're going and what's next today. Okay. Can you see that?
Yes.
All right. I'm sorry, it's just not advancing for me. So where we're going is to the retreat objectives. Here's what we're looking to accomplish, very similar to previous years. We're gonna continue to build our cohesiveness as a team for you all to connect with each other. We're going to also um review and assess the best practices in working together and to give you a chance to see how are they working for you? What might you wanna shift and change and add? Uh we will, of course, as always, review 2020 work plans to see what progress has been made, what updates are there. We'll get those report outs from staff as well. We'll see what potentially needs to move over into 2021. And of course, finally, we'll identify opportunities that the commission wants to work on for 2021 and put together the 2021 work plans. So our agenda is as follows here. Um you all got this in an email, um but we'll spend really until a good 11 o'clock or so connecting with each other. Um then this afternoon, we'll come back and we'll start to dive deep into reviewing 2020 and beginning to look at what we wanna put on the list for 2021. Tomorrow is very much focused on 2021. So that's where we're going. A couple of things to remember as always when we work together. Uh this is sort of old hat, but you all do this already. But I never um wanna step over the importance of just establishing our ground rules. And to make sure that we all remain open and present, thanks to George and his intention, we all know to stay focused on one thing at a time. We also wanna make sure that you feel free to participate, ask questions, share your ideas. Uh this is your forum, uh so please use it as you'd like. And to value every voice and perspective. I mean, everyone has a perspective that contributes. Um listen for it. Value is coming through. Respect what people are saying, even if it's different from what you're thinking. And as always, listen for the future to emerge because that's what you all do. I mean, you chart the direction of the city, um not just for today, but for what would make it a very pleasant tomorrow. So listen for that to emerge. I will be that timekeeper, so sometimes I'll be reeling us back in and saying, time to move on or helping you finalize a point so that we can move on. So expect to have me um guiding, intruding, summarizing quite a bit to keep us on time. And as always, which is not difficult with this group, have a good time. Have a little fun. That's just my only other ground rule for you all. Is there anything that you wanna share or add to this list or is this pretty good? Good? Great, great, great. So um the next thing I wanted to move um into is as we get into connecting, you guys just began to do a little bit of this. But 2020 was a challenging year and like, hooray, you made it. We made it through the year. We made it through the year. We made it. We're still in the midst of pandemic. We're still in the midst of protest and racial injustice. And still, there's a lot to celebrate. There's a lot to acknowledge that maybe didn't work and some emerging opportunities. And so I call this roses, thorns and buds, where we get to look at those things. And so as a commission, I want you just to think about, what was your rose this year? What do you want to celebrate? What is there a success or win that you all have had as a commission? Because this is, this was the first full year of you all coming together as a commission. And I want to just give you a quick moment to, to think about and jot down, what do we want to celebrate about how we showed up as a commission? Or even how I maybe showed up as an individual commissioner or staff. But just take a moment and then I'd just love to hear a few thoughts before we move on. Welcome, David.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, David.
Morning.
You're very dark.
He must, he must be on the dark side.
Meredith's mantra.
That means we can't see you.
I know. I'm a little under the weather. Not feeling 100%. So I'm giving it up my all.
All right. And it's okay. You can, you can turn your video off if you want. Although we miss your face, but whatever works for you, we understand.
I'll send him, I'll send him my mantra. And David, you make us 14. I've been unsettled because we've been 13 till now. So now we're good.
I'm glad.
Don't get used to it.
I know, right?
All right. So who will share? What are some of the things we want to celebrate? You want to acknowledge that it worked well in 2020? As your first year as a commission.
I'll go first.
Yeah.
You know, I was sitting here thinking about all the things that happened in 2020. And there were some huge successes, but I want to pivot back to something that happened sort of right at the beginning of the pandemic. There had been protests and there was a call to meet with the commission by the Beacon Hill Alliance and the Black Student Union at Decatur High School. And it was a really charged environment. And I think that meeting and us listening to the pain that those students had really focused me on what we needed to do in 2020. And I think that had we not gone and, you know, taking, taken that sort of public gut punch, I think the year might have been dramatically different. So I think that getting that sort of gut punch and realizing that this is a lot bigger than us and the pain that the young people felt. I think it gave me the energy and I know, you know, I spoke to others that it gave us that, okay, this is what we have to do. And so that's a rose and a thorn. So.
Yeah. Thank you, Tony. Yeah.
Very good. Other thoughts? Other roses or even a comment?
I'm sorry to lead out to be so dark.
No, it wasn't dark. It was, it was great.
Well, next, building upon what Teresa, I thought that a big rose was getting rid of the monument, which I guess stemmed from what Tony mentioned. As I remember being on the square that evening and just kind of as it all unfolded. And to me, that was a, it's a very special moment and kind of, I think, a rose that we all shared. So I thought that was definitely something to celebrate. And I also, I did try to think of big things. So I have two. And that was when the pandemic hit and when there was all this uncertainty, we're shutting down the businesses and, and, you know, trying to keep our citizens safe. We, we created that loan relief fund and got it up and running incredibly quickly. And to me, just showing that ability to pivot and to invest in our community effectively in a very short time to help keep what makes Decatur special alive. And I'm not saying, you know, doing what we could. That was a rose for me also.
Yeah, thank you, George. Powerful. Who else has a rose to share?
Jump in. The rose I, I wanted to share first is something that I think was a just an unexpected surprise accomplishment in the midst of challenge. But the Boys and Girls Club acquisition, because I think it came at the right time of the year where we could even, you know, believe that we were resilient enough to do that and bring it all the way to fruition in, even in this calendar year. I think if we'd been looking at it in the first quarter or even early second quarter, it would have been hard to, hard to know what we could or should do. But we were deep enough in the year improving resiliency that I, and it gave me a lot of hope and it felt normal. So that was a real rose for me personally. And I don't want to step on anybody's toes if they wanted to do, do this one. I don't, I don't relish calling something that we did in a response to like the worst crisis I've ever faced, which is the pandemic. I hate to call the mask mandate a rose. But to be honest, I think of, of all the things we accomplished this year that had the most benefit and continues to resonate back to us and that we could have truly led by, we led by example. Maybe even across the country. I don't know if other small cities got this done because of us. But I think all of Georgia watched. And I think it was a really important thing for us to do and hash out and to do it as soon as we did. And it's still paying us back. I, I believe that. So those are two roses in my book.
Yeah. Thank you, Kelly. Powerful roses.
If I could, if I could jump in and just add to that because it just popped into my mind. But I mean, I think that what Commissioner Walsh just said, that period between March and really end of June. I think from a historical standpoint, we should, we definitely should not forget the fact that Decatur and some other cities did lead the way. There's very much a consensus among a lot of the population and among the press even that we were somehow violating the law. And that was proven inaccurate. I mean, there was this vacuum of leadership at the state level. And some cities took a step forward and did what not only what we believed was right, but what we believed was truly legal and needed. So I just think it's one of those little footnotes of history, at least for Decatur, our four square miles that we should not forget.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Brian, putting that in.
Easy to forget.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
And while I'm talking, I'll go ahead and jump in with my other, and then I'll shut up. My rose, and this is more of wearing my hat as just a longtime citizen of the city of Decatur and not a city attorney and small business owner, is the front yard tree program. To me, I think that's really cool. And I think it kind of fits something that I've watched over the years. And sometimes it's, it's little small, kind of obvious things that could end up making a huge impact for generations to come. We can't forget those little small things either.
All right. Anyone else want to share a rose?
I'll just. One comment I would like to make is that I do hope, you know, as you mentioned in some of the ground rules, you know, that there, this isn't open. I hope, you know, there's no order in which anyone needs to think they should participate. So I, I just want to, we sort of went in, in a, a order in our first responses that I responded in the Mayor Pro Tem and then Commissioner Walsh and then Commissioners Meyer and Duzenberry as the two newest people. But I, I do want, as, you know, one of my mantras was to be open and to listen. And so I want, I want to reinforce that I hope everyone is free to jump in and make, make their comments whenever they have something to say and not feel like that there needs to be an order in which to make comments based on, I guess, the position on the commission or in terms of hierarchy in terms of the, the city staff. And so I, I do want to reinforce that open exchange of ideas that everyone here is here because we function as, as a team to Mr. Saxon's point of view. And, and in terms of my, my roses or there are, there certainly, I think there are a lot of them, but a couple that I, I thought about and were reinforced by things others said was our overall pandemic response. And the, not only to the COVID-19 pandemic, but to what we certainly saw as issues with equity and to Tony's comments, you know, really listening to the pain and the voices that we heard when we gathered with Beacon Hill Student Group. And it was interesting, a couple of thoughts that came together as people were speaking. I remember being there, watching the removal of the Confederate monument. And Bill Torpey from the AJC came up and was, was chatting with me. And he said, you know, the first thing I did when I got here, and he had brought his whole family. And he said, I went back to my car and grabbed our masks because I realized I'm in Decatur. I'd better have my mask on. And so he had gone back and made sure and that he, you know, and all his kids and his, his wife and he all had on, on mask. And so I thought, you know, there is a recognition of not only what we were doing with the, with the monument removal, but of, he was aware of the, what we were taking very seriously with respect to wearing a mask and, and staying safe. So I just thought that was kind of an interesting intersection of, of thoughts and ideals and what we were, what we were valuing and saying to our community. What, here's what we think is important and that we honor. So thank you.
I could jump in. I remember in his column, he actually wrote about that. How he showed up. He's like, oh crap, I have my mask.
But he confessed to me.
Yeah, I know. It was interesting. It was a good point.
Yeah, it speaks to the standard that you set and what people come to know and expect and respect. Yeah.
So one of the things I really missed this year is being able to connect with all the commissioners like we usually do. So last, last year, when we drove home from the commission retreat, I rode with George. So I feel like I got to connect with him. And this year, Commissioner Meyer led a community art group. And I saw a completely different side of her by being there. And it was so exciting to me because clearly she's used to being in charge of special projects. This woman had a, had a microphone. We're going to do this. And she had it lined up perfectly. And as being a former special events person that thinks about stuff like that, I just sat back and went, you go. So it, it made me feel more connected to, to Commissioner Meyer, the way I felt connected with Commissioner Duzenberry. And I'm looking forward to being able to be in person and for us to all be able to connect like that. But it just makes me laugh, Commissioner Meyer. So I felt like I needed to jump in there.
I'm the oldest of six, so I'm just really just being my true self.
He's a boss.
There are times I need the megaphone at family events, too.
That's great. Good. Thank you, Lynda. Yeah.
Well, I'll follow up with what Lynda said. That's definitely one of my roses was the mural painting, the community mural painting. That was, that was a really meaningful, beautiful event. And I think, I don't want to call it an event because it was an event. It was, it was a purpose driven task. And we all safely did our part to complete that purpose driven task. And that was a very special moment of this year. And seeing, you know, members of city staff, seeing the commissioners, seeing their families there really helped to solidify the fact that we're, that we're a team. So I thought that was really a special rose in, in a year of thorns. And then, of course, I'm sure everybody knows I'm going to say that a rose of mine was the passing of mandatory inclusionary housing. That's my obvious rose.
Yay. All right. Very good. Yeah. David, you trying to get in?
Sure. Thank you. You know, one, we've talked a long time about voices that we don't typically hear or what groups in our community are we missing? And what can we do to, to try to be more open and inclusive? And this year, watching the, the young adults in our community come forward with some really powerful, you know, statements and emotions. And it was, that was a very powerful part for me. And that was definitely a rose to see them be comfortable, you know, that they were able to organize themselves and present themselves in an extremely, you know, mature manner and, and make a statement for change. I thought was a, a great thing this year.
The future will be in decent hands. Yes. Yeah. Good.
Can I say something?
Yes.
So again, I think everything that's been described is, really illustrates how teamwork can be so important. You know, all of the things that have been, you know, mentioned, you know, are, were. A number of us had pieces of it. And I think, again, it sort of illustrates the, the gestalt, the, you know, that our organization has, that it's, we are accomplish. We're so much, the whole is so much greater than the sum of the parts. And again, the value of being a strong team is a result of, of being a strong team. The thing that, just one little thing that was special to me this year. I got to get to know, doesn't happen as often as it used to where I make a good friend. And got to work with a gentleman named Jack Amick, who, to. to help develop a cross-country trail over at Legacy Park that became a really fine facility, mostly due to his personal effort. And it became a, you know, really terrific, valuable kind of resource in our community, made use of the property we bought to help do these sort of things and cost really very little in money, but lots of blood, sweat and tears, especially on Jack's part. And so it was really rewarding to see, and again, see the community start using it and it being the region, cross-country championships taking place there. Just a fabulous day. And terrific opportunity during, you know, the pandemic for outdoor activity, safe outdoor activity. So that was a special, very special thing this year for me.
Teamwork, beautiful and all coming together. Yeah. Good. Thanks for sharing you.
I'll jump in. And I mean, I, I, I mean, we could, we could put together a pretty long list, I believe, that, you know, in spite of the challenging year 2020, had a lot of highs and a lot of successes. I'm going to highlight something that I would assume maybe under the radar for, for most folks. And actually, it was yesterday when I was speaking with Meredith. I recognized that a decision that was made internally in HR has made a really big difference within our organization. And I give Teresa credit when she was wearing the mini hats, but including the acting HR director hat. You know, as soon as we, you know, employees came to us, you know, again, this is very early and, you know, with possible exposure to COVID, either at work or with family members, wherever. And immediately Teresa worked to find a partner with whom we entered into an agreement with for same-day, you know, immediate result testing for COVID. And that may not sound like a particularly big deal. However, it, it, one, I believe it's been extremely effective in terms of being able to, you know, identify the illness, you know, immediately to, to, you know, to limit the spread within the organization and ultimately keep our employees safe. And this is not something that, you know, that other, other organizations necessarily have had the same opportunity. But I give Teresa and her, her team a whole lot of credit for having that foresight that, you know, this was going to be critical. And, you know, I think it's, it served the organization, you know, extremely well, you know, for the past 10, 11 months and will continue. But again, just, you know, there's a lot of things that, that happen internally that we don't necessarily communicate and celebrate. But this is something that otherwise kind of falls under the radar, but has had a significant positive impact on the organization.
Very good. Yeah. Thanks for sharing. Thanks for your efforts, Teresa. Excellent. Excellent. All right. So I want to move on to the next obvious category. Thorns. So we know, we know the big thorns, right? But give yourself permission just to, just to clear it out. What were your disappointments? What were your frustrations? Just to get it out, let it be said. And I'm sure just having to deal with the pandemic overall could be one. But there could be others. So what are your thorns? Take a moment to think about that.
Well, I miss, I miss being with people. I get a lot of energy from being around people and you know, I, I just, I mean, this is, I think this is a, you know, terrific option to have in the, you know, the environment that we're in, but it, it certainly does not replace the physical connection that we enjoy during normal times. And the, all, it's, you know, I guess it's a little thing. I mean, it seems like it's a little thing when you, when you are, have it, when it's available. But when you miss, when you don't have the physical connection that we always have enjoyed, you know, for so many years, it, it really does, you know, make, make our, you know, efforts as a team more difficult.
Yeah. Go ahead, Teresa.
I was going to say to piggyback on that, in the beginning of the pandemic, I saw like a meme that said, check on your extrovert friends because we're really struggling during this. So I, me and Hugh are both extroverts. So it's, it's been really hard not having that, you know, person-to-person connection and just being able to work on projects collaboratively. I mean, you adjust, you pivot, but it's just not the same. It's not having those car rides or those dinners that we had. So.
Other thoughts, other thorns? I'm, I'm with you. I, I miss that same thing. Just the, the things you take for granted, like the water cooler conversations, things that happen, oh, by the way, everything not having to be planned in order to have these conversations. So I'm definitely with you. Other thoughts about your thorns for the year?
Kelly, I don't know if this is a thorn or not, but it's, it's, it was tough this year. Seeing, you know, the businesses in our city struggle. You know, we've always had struggles and challenges and, you know, issues affecting how, how they thrive. But, you know, to see how the pandemic really, I mean, closed doors for periods of time and think about the service workers that were there. That was tough. Trying to figure out how in the world we were going to support them and the community, support them. So that was difficult.
Yeah. Thanks, David. Tony?
And to go along those same lines, I wish that we had the resources to make sure that we were able to support 100% of businesses in need. I mean, I think that's the real challenge. While you have industries that are thriving, you have so many that are struggling and, you know, they're still an upcoming thorn. There are going to be a lot of people displaced because they cannot pay their mortgages or their rents. And so we're going to have this new generation of homeless. And there is absolutely nothing we can do to stop it at this point.
That's a sequitur for me, Tony. Thanks for saying that. I feel like something that's made me feel a sense of powerlessness in some ways. And is just, is painful and can be sad is seeing the people, particularly it's closer to where I would live, um, near downtown, but who have no shelter. And it was one of the quickest, most visible signs of the, the, the way the pandemic accelerated a problem that already existed. And I just have felt all year, like I wish as a body, as a town, as a community, we could do more. And I think we've made some strides, but that is, when, when people are, are living outside very near you and you don't know how to help and you feel powerless. It's been, it's been a thorn this year, I think. And not in the, the way the, the word sounds, meaning it's, it's, it's caused pain. It's been a challenge and I wish, I wish we could do more and do better. So. And I felt like there was some divisions in the community that because social media and living virtually is the only way we have to relate, were possibly deeper or became more personal more quickly or got more bandwidth because we, we may have otherwise been more connected in person. Could have had more meetings or level sets or events that helped us all start to get, get back together in the room where we are always more polite, more civil, finding common ground, making friends and, and sometimes we then have fun, you know. So I believe that those things will get better, but some of the divisions were pretty profound in our meetings around some Legacy Park planning there and a couple of other things. But I do think that we will hopefully build more bridges again, as we come back together even more in person and feel healthier and feel stronger. And there's less uncertainty around us. I'm assuming that will get better.
That was really the, the, one of the things that came to mind that I had jotted down, sort of the tenor and tone, even our own community of, of conversations, particularly over, over social media and, or in the, the virtual environment. And how do we address our differences and, in a different way? And how do we have those conversations in more productive and less personal ways and sort of recognize the frustration that we all feel with that lack of regular social contact and having to, to alter our normal patterns of, of behavior in life and that it is, it is difficult. It's challenging. And, but I, I, it has been hard to watch sometimes the conversations and sort of the, the, the tone that they have taken. And to Commissioner Walsh's point, I hope as we begin to move forward in a lot of different ways, how do we, how do we address things in a way that feel more productive, more civil and, and kinder, you know, to Mr. Saxon's point, let's be, be kind as we deal with, with one another and respectful. And I think we, of all things, want to be, be, be open, be honest, listen and be respectful.
That was mine as well. So I think we all had a very similar experience with that. And, and some of the thoughts that came to mind for me were the, being put in a position where we were having to defend our integrity and having to address the potential or prospective loss of public trust. I wasn't expecting that coming into this. I, I, I think that as a new commissioner, with all of the optimism that comes with that, I really anticipated that our community would know that we are in it for the right reasons and all trying to do our best. And I don't think that we were in an environment where we could personally convey our intentions as well as we would if we were able to make those face-to-face one-on-one connections. And so whereas I feel that that was a thorn, I also consider that a bud.
Good. An emerging opportunity. Yeah.
Well said. Thank you.
Well, and you're also pointing to what you're experiencing being representative of what's going on in the country, if not the world. And what happens to any human being when they feel a sense of threat and loss of power and control. It's just how the nervous system in the brain takes over, digs in the heels, creates separation. And unfortunately, that's what this time of, has, has put many people in this place of being so scared that we resort back to that primitive thinking. And this is how it's come out within the city. And you're right, definitely an opportunity to do some things differently in order to ease that pain.
Well, one of the hardest things for me this year was early in the pandemic when we, you know, immediately shut down, you know, most of our programming while, you know, much of our, much of our work carried on. You know, what could be done remotely was done remotely. Of course, our first responders, police, fire, public works, you know, continued. But so many of our, our active living programs, you know, immediately shut down. And, and with that, we had to furlough about 20 part-time employees, something that has never been done, you know, in the history of this organization. So that was, you know, definitely one of the hardest, you know, hardest, most, you know, emotional decisions that I had to make, you know, for the, you know, for the good of the organization. It was the right decision for the organization. But it was, you know, I, but I also knew that the decision, you know, was having a negative, negative impact on people that, that I care about. And so that was, you know, extremely difficult. And I mean, I guess the, you know, there's a little bit of a, I guess, maybe the, the rose or the bud coming out of that is, you know, to see how that department responded, you know, and the, the full-time employees, you know, maintained, you know, a very positive attitude. And, you know, instead of just, you know, kind of, you know, running home and, you know, you know, kind of licking their wounds, you know, they came out. And it's some of the, really some of the most creative, you know, individuals, you know, in the organization and said, okay, you know, we may not have, you know, all of the support of our part-time crew anymore, but we can still provide programs to the community in a safe way. I mean, who else is doing bubble, you know, soccer in a bubble? People are literally running around in plastic bubbles. But again, just an example of the creativity that has come out of the challenge. But nonetheless, not to forget that there are people that are, that are, you know, that are hurting. They're, you know, very close to us because of the, you know, the, the economic impact of the pandemic.
I want to do bubble soccer.
On me up.
That would be a spectacle that I'm sure tons of.
Great. Good.
I'll go after that one because I did have furlough as one of my thorns. And I think also just the state of uncertainty that has been a thorn for me, especially when I was playing the HR director role. Because you had a lot of employees kind of asking, well, when is the furlough going to end? Or when are we going to go back to our normal business practices? And just having to say, you know, we will see or we are going to make a database decision. And I think there's something good that comes out of that is that I think it kind of start, like you started to see the trust, you know? Build the trust and also see the trust that they have in us, you know, when we start talking about the numbers and they see that we're actually tracking this information. And we are going to make a decision that's best for, you know, the health and the safety of our employees. So that, that has been kind of the bud, but it's the uncertainty that's just so hard. You know, you just can't give anybody an answer on, you know, what's going to happen next.
Good. So unless there's any more thorns we want to put out there, I want to move to where many of you are already going. Like what are those emerging little buds? Those seeds of new ideas, new opportunities that, that you can tell are starting to poke through at this time. You might consider these some, you know, some hope for the future that you're already excited about.
I'll go first real quick. You know, just because I am the commission representative for our youth council, seeing the creativity and the buzz that our young people are starting to generate, I think there is great hope that the next generation is going to get it right. And, you know, they are some of the most creative. I know just sitting back doing their interviews I know just sitting back doing their interviews was blown away that they are tackling, you know, issues and crises that many adults can't come up with coherent answers for. So I am very thankful that our youth are so engaged right now and continue to stay engaged.
Right.
What I have seen is, ha, has to do with the community and it's specifically the, my, being on the board with the Decatur Book Festival and watching them pivot and, and them deciding, instead of saying, well, we wanna go back to the way it was or when we do that, this year they're taking a pause year to plan what could be in twenty twenty-two. I mean, in taking a pause from doing something, uh, physical festival. They'll do some virtual stuff, but, but actually taking the time to think about what's it gonna be like um, as we go back. And it's not gonna be exactly the same and, and the fact that they're embracing that and, um, is, gives me a lot of hope.
Great. What else?
I think equity work in the community is a true beautiful blossoming bud. You know, if we, if we water and nurture it, it'll be a beautiful flower.
Yes.
I agree.
We'll talk about that one a little more too today.
I think Legacy, um, Park and the Legacy Board and, um, the, the, um, work that has, uh, been underway for a while, but I think the, what we will see happening, um, sooner rather than, I mean, some of it will be later as we know, but, uh, you mentioned the Cross Country Trail, um, we, uh, had a board meeting, uh, this week where we announced, uh, uh, an executive director. Um, we got a grant at the end of the year for five thousand dollars to spend sort of the way the, the, uh, board decides to spend it. There, uh, was a, we have a film contract. There are, um, organizations that have their offices there. And when they can come back to those offices, have that ability to connect and they're all related to, um, the community good in, in Decatur and, um, just being out there and seeing how many people are enjoying the, um, that park area and seeing, you know, there are people living out there now and the opportunities for more people to, to live there and enjoy that area, um, is really exciting. And I think is, as, as, um, Commissioner Meyer mentioned, if we water it, fertilize it and take care of it, take care of it, I think we'll see some beautiful roses blooming, um, both maybe literally and figuratively out there, uh, as things happen, um, uh, as we look forward to the twenty twenty-three celebration. Um, I think it'll, you know, what we see in, in January of twenty twenty-one really fun to see what we can celebrate in, um, maybe the summer of twenty twenty-three at, at Legacy. So I think that's definitely a bud that we can be proud of and can watch bloom over really, you know, generations.
Beautiful, beautiful.
I wanna build a little on, uh, something Andrea talked about earlier and it's the, really the staff that, uh, you know, the creativity and, uh, leadership that, uh, uh, members of our, uh, organization showed, and especially, uh, as she mentioned, uh, uh, Active Living and Children and Youth Services. And I would also wanna mention, uh, our first responders, police, fire, public works, how they were, uh, able to, uh, perform so ably, uh, this year and, uh, doing, 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 uh, much of the same work, but in different ways, uh, having to respond to the, uh, pandemic. And, uh, that it also, uh, uh, provides, uh, the opportunities for, uh, emerging leadership. And, uh, the, um, you know, the ways, I mean, I think we've learned some things, uh, this year, uh, just being challenged. Uh, how to, uh, in this, uh, I think we'll, uh, we're probably gonna have the same, uh, be working probably in the same environment for, uh, twenty twenty-one, really. I think, I don't, I don't see this, uh, uh, changing. I think it's, it's be a big challenge for our business community and, but also, uh, as an organization. Um, and how we, uh, uh, have to learn to do things differently, um, to, um, you know, uh, uh, you know, move ahead and, uh, make progress.
I'll go next. Um, I'm sorry, David, you wanna go first?
No, sir, go ahead.
Don't you call me sir. Um, couple of things, um, one is I guess two buds together, those double blooms. Um, but for me, um, the opportunity to do the Downtown Master Plan and I, I feel like a, a policy geek, just taking things and making them too, too substantive and not as, as a turret. Uh, but the Downtown Master Plan and the, uh, Green Space and Facilities Plan, um, when I heard, you know, the conversation we're hearing earlier about building trust and listening. Um, and these are two really great opportunities, I think, to take some topics that are of concerns to our citizens and listen and build that trust, um, that we can move forward with. So to me, those, that, that double bloom is something that's really important. And then a smaller bloom, um, is, which is, you know, maybe a bloom next to a thorn, um, is that is part of the, um, Atlanta Crossing, uh, that we're looking at Railroad Crossing and the redevelopment of that. Um, the opportunity perhaps look at, um, some, some tree wells and beautification, um, along Howard Avenue. To me, that, it, it, I don't know if it's gonna bloom or not, but I'm just wanna give a shout out to, um, Mr. Saxton for, um, exploring that op bid. I'm not sure what the, the, the technical term is, but, um, to me, that, that's a bloom. I think that's something that, um, would, uh, bloom for the community in general.
Great, thanks, George. Good opportunities.
I think, finally, I'll say, um, then we'll get David in.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, David.
Sorry, David. The externally focused, uh, topical one, I'd say a bud for me, something I'll be really excited to see grow and develop and see how we can enrich it would be our actions on uh, climate change and clean energy and that we've kind of burst through a, a little barrier that, that we've had and we can uh, see where we go with that. I know there's, um, just such strong support and a penchant in the community for our attention there and our, our work. And, um, it's not that we haven't wanted to or been willing, but we're, I think we have this coalescence now of uh, all the, all the, all the right things in the mix to work more on that and really make a difference and make it, uh, sooner versus later. So that's a, a bud for me. I wanna watch that grow and, and cultivate it this year. And more internally focused, and I don't wanna make anybody's face turn red, but, um, I always think of, uh, I feel like I have a budding relationship with, um, with George and Lisa, and I'm grateful for that. And it's gonna take twice as long to be the kind of friends I wanna be since we have not had the kind of year we could have had. But I consider a friend to be, you know, someone I can call and ask for help and I know they'll help me out and I know you both would. And George is great cuz you're my neighbor and you call me when my dog is on your front porch. And Lisa, if my dog's ever on your porch, don't call me, maybe. But, um,
Google, let me know.
I say that because these friendships are interesting. They're a long time in coming, meaning we have a lot of friends in common. We've been working on things that overlap. We have so many, literally hundreds of ways that our paths have crossed in the, in the past and, and now we do this work together. So, uh, for me, that's a real bud and I hope we can grow that this year and, and have, you know, get even more closer to, we, we, I really appreciate Kelly saying that we would, I think we should all wanna have some fun and this really can be fun and it's, it's a joy. It truly is a joy. So.
I wanna say, aww. That's what we want. I mean, it's so much easier to be productive and get things done when you really enjoy um, and respect your working relationships. So.
Oh, the other part of the friendship definition is if you respond to my texts and are willing to, um, you know, send links, have fun, share photos. That's, you know, important, which you both do.
Good. It's a, it's a great way for it to be, you know, all, all work and no pleasure, but it's nice to bring in a little bit of, of our humanity with each other as well. Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Kelly. All right, um, Andrea, then David.
I think David had his hand up a while ago.
David.
You ready?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, I know this doesn't exactly fit within the order that we did this, but also the to watch the challenges that the school system has had to undergo this year in responding to the pandemic and then ultimately seeing the impact that had on, on, you know, caretakers and parents to, to go to work and get their jobs done. I mean, it's really been a a challenge. We continue to, to live through that, that challenging times as the pandemic, uh, persists. Um, and how that can impact our community and as well as, you know, create some divisiveness and, and, um, um, you know, strong feelings about decisions that are trying to be made for the betterment of everybody. And, you know, that you know, the access to information or the lack of information, um, has been a challenge. But I think it's also created opportunities to try to figure out new ways to, to do our, our work and communicate with, with, um, residents and so.
Great, thanks for sharing.
Yeah, thanks, David. I think there's, um, a lot of opportunity, um, with our school system and their relationship. And I think we've, I mean, I know, um, that you and Public Works have, you know, worked closely with the school system, you know, through the pandemic and, you know, sharing, sharing lessons even from a facility standpoint. But I, I really, I value that relationship that, um, that we have with the school system. And I think it's, you know, it's from the, the board, um, relationships, you know, all the way down to some of the, the frontline staff. Um, I was gonna say in this, um, not to be too repetitive, but, um, Commissioner Walsh, Walsh mentioned the, um, you know, the opportunity for Clean Energy Plan and, um, and efforts around climate change. Um, and I do, I feel like, you know, the time is right. And I do think we need to be, um, it's important to be clear that we, you know, we have, you know, done things, you know, we've, um, you know, we've passed, um, you know, ordinances and policies, um, that, um, you know, that, that are promoting, um, you know, and, you know, strong environmental policy, um, good environmental policy. And, um, but I think the, having the, the Clean Energy Plan will give us an opportunity to, um, to identify what we have done as well as to identify what else needs to be done. So really, you know, to, to lay out the plan, um, you know, in, you know, in a document strategically. And I just think we have an opportunity, um, you know, to be a leader and to be a model, you know, in the state, in the region. Um, you know, we, you know, we may be small, um, and I think that the beauty of our size is that we, we are very much, we can be a laboratory and, um, and, you know, and, and, um, you know, in research policy, past policy, you know, execute on that policy and do that fairly swiftly um, and report the results of that, um, and, and, you know, and do that work for other communities that, um, that, you know, may not, you know, may not have the resources, um, to do what we can do. And so I just think it's a tremendous opportunity. And I do feel like, um, this is, you know, the time is right and the, the community is behind it. So that's, um, and, and, you know, the commission's already made, made the commitment, um, you know, just recently to put funding into the Clean Energy Plan. And so we are, you know, we're on our way, um, to, to getting started on this work.
Great, good to hear. All right, any more?
Yeah, I do. Um, so I do have three buds that I would like to share. The first one is the Strategic Plan. And there's something very specific about the Strategic Plan. I mean, yes, it plants the bud for the next ten years. But I think with the, um, I'm gonna just say it, you know, kind of these welcome interruptions in a way from the social unrest and even the pandemic, it's for, forcing us to think differently about where we're headed for the next ten years. So I, um, you know, I know it's a thorn, but I also see it as a bud for us to think differently. The second is the Affordable Housing Fellowship. Um, you know, back in the spring, we really, as an organization, had to think differently about our budget. Um, and I just wanna say thank you to the City Commission, um, for being willing to, to provide that extra budget money to create a new position. This was the only position that was created, um, for, for that round. And, um, and I, you know, we're only a couple of months into the fellowship and seeing what's happening, at least behind the scenes, the, the communications and the research that has started. Um, I definitely see this as a bud and some great things and some outcomes are gonna come from this fellowship. Um, and then the third is, some of you know that I, I have a love-hate relationship with technology. Um, but the, uh, I, I'm just curious to see what technology that we are going to keep as an organization, um, going forward, even post-pandemic, um, to, to help us, you know, stay a lean, efficient, um, resourceful organization. Um, so those are, those are my three buds.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Thank all of you for sharing. I, I know, I, I think it's just important to take a moment and to reflect on your wins, on the disappointments and frustrations and to recognize through all of that, um, there are emerging gleams of light that we could not have expected before. So thank you for just taking the time to work through those. Uh, we're gonna take a break, give you an opportunity for a stretch break and then we will come back. And we will continue our conversation, um, really about taking a stand. And we'll tell you a little bit more about that when we return. It's about, oh, thirty after. So fifteen minutes sound good? All right. So feel free to turn off your camera or mute yourself and then come right back, um, at quarter till. Thanks, everyone.